So we're gonna go ahead and get started two minutes earlier. So good evening, everyone. We do have an online audience already. Is that right, Adam? Yep. All right. So thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight for our public hearing. My name is Edna Jimenez. I'm the outreach project manager for this project. So again, welcome to tonight's public hearing for the SR 33 pavement preservation project. We appreciate you joining us tonight, taking time out of your busy schedule to learn more about the project. For those of you that have been following this project for quite a few years, welcome back. We hope that you're able to get an update tonight. I will be serving as your facilitator for tonight's public hearing. I do want to acknowledge that we have Atticus Reyes, field representative for Assembly member Steve Bennett's office. I invite you to come up and give a couple of remarks here.
Thank you, Edna. My name's Atticus Reyes. I am field representative for Assembly member Steve Bennett. I also grew up in Ojai, went to Nordoff, go Rangers, drive through this corridor twice a day on my way to work, so very familiar with this drive. The Assembly member fortunately could not be here today. He's up in Sacramento. He really, really wanted to be here, but he wanted me to come here and read the following remarks on his behalf. And many of you who were here at the first meeting a few years ago, he was here as well. So I will now read. Turn that off. Good evening. I wish I could be there with you all tonight. Unfortunately, Caltrans and I could not get our schedules to coordinate for this Oakview meeting. I am in Sacramento for our second busiest week of the legislative session with the deadline of this Friday. I want to thank you all for attending tonight. Engaged communities are essential for good government to evolve. I also want to thank everyone who has participated in this project over the last decade. Your ideas, your input, your collaboration, and your feedback have been the foundation of this project. For years, when I was the county supervisor representing this area, we heard frustration with this Oakview corridor and that the community of Oakview often felt ignored. So we had a public community meeting in Oakview to hear from residents. It was a well-attended, open meeting that gave broad support to exploring options to improving pedestrian and traffic safety. After a series of additional public meetings, this project was launched. What I would like to stress, this was a multi-year, transparent, and good-faith effort to address the needs that were presented by the many residents of Oakview who attended these meetings. A decade later, we find ourselves with this demonstration project of only the beginning phase of an Oakview beautification and improvement project. I understand that change is hard, and I understand that it is hard to evaluate with only a partial presentation of the full project. The purpose of this demonstration project is to reveal some of the advantages and disadvantages of this change. That is why Caltrans does demonstration projects. I would be remiss if I did not mention that with all the budget cuts coming, we will likely not see Caltrans able to start another project in Oakview like this for many decades. As many of you share your feedback on this project, whether it is positive or negative, I ask you to remember that this is a good-faith effort to do what governments should do, talk with citizens, and try to make their lives better. So I hope you can give us both positive and negative feedback in an objective manner. Let's have a respectful conversation with each other and appreciate each other's points of view and appreciate the effort of Caltrans professionals to receive healthy feedback from our Oakview community. Thank you, Steve Bennett.
Well, thank you, Atticus. All right. Before we get started, go to the next slide, please. Before we get started with the official presentation, I do want to call out your attention to a few items. First of all, this is a bilingual public hearing tonight. I will be making this announcement in Spanish. During registration, you should have been given, if you needed, a headset if you need to listen to the presentation in Spanish. If you do not have one and you need it, please raise your hand, and one of our staff members will provide you a headset. For those of you online on your computer or your phone, you should be able to see an icon for interpretation as seen on the screen here. Please click on it and select the Spanish. Go ahead and mute your original audio. You should be able to provide or use the Spanish option, and you will be able to listen to the Spanish interpretation live. La audiencia pública de hoy es ofrecida en español. Si usted está asistiendo en persona y desea escuchar la presentación en español, tenemos audífonos en el registro. Si no recibió uno, por favor levante la mano y uno de nuestro equipo le ayudará. Para los que están escuchando en línea a través de Zoom por su computadora o su teléfono, si necesita escuchar la presentación en español, por favor haga clic en el icono que muestra Interpretation y selecciona español. Después tendrá que escoger Mute Original Audio y podrá escuchar la interpretación en vivo. Si desea escuchar en español solamente, puede llamar al teléfono marcando (571) 317-3112 y use el número de acceso (832) 132405. Next slide, please. All right. So again, thank you for joining us tonight. We do have a great turnout in person here. Online, we have about 15 people, so great turnout overall. So before we get started again, our expectation tonight, whether you are in person or online, is that we will conduct a respectful meeting and allow ideas and comments to be shared in an open and fair environment. Tonight's hearing is a simultaneous hybrid public hearing. Like you heard, we do have online via Zoom and also obviously here in person. Please note that today we are not responding to any specific questions related to impacts, environmental topics, or anything related to the draft document. These questions and comments will be taken as part of the comment period tonight. Our online team is monitoring the raised hands, and we will be paying attention to those when it comes to the public comment portion tonight. For those of you that are calling in by phone only, if you need to state a question or comment during the comment portion, you will need to press *9 to raise your hand and then *6 to unmute yourselves. Again, we do have a court reporter tonight. It is a public hearing. We have our court reporter to my left here, and as I mentioned, we do have our simultaneous interpreter that's over there in the back if you need the Spanish interpretation. For our online audience, your webcams and microphones will remain off the entire presentation. We are conducting this public hearing to update you on this project and also to receive your comments on the scope of the environmental review as well as the environmental elements and activities presented in the draft initial study environmental assessment. So with all that in mind, we will go ahead and start the public hearing, and I do invite Joseph to come up. We are here until 7:30, so just wanted to point that out. We'll try to get through all comments as much as possible.
Well, thank you for coming here today, and this is probably maybe four, five meetings you have been here, but I promise you this is probably the last one you're gonna have. So thank you for coming and spending this afternoon with us. My name is Joseph Kebe. I work for Caltrans as a project manager. And for agenda tonight, we'll be talking about the project history. I'll briefly go over it for some of you who haven't been following yet. I'm also gonna be talking about the pavement project that is part of this, part of the Oakview bike lane project, and also a little bit about the demonstration project. We'll go over the scope of the project and the three alternatives that have been proposed. I'll also talk about the demonstration project, as well some of the responses that we got from the community, as well as the lessons that we learned from the demonstration project. Afterwards, we had, Caltrans hired a traffic consultant, and he'll go over briefly about and discuss the traffic report and how the conclusions from the study of that traffic report. Thereafter, there will be an environmental briefing, which is, addresses the environmental part of the project. Next slide, please. So this project started quite a while ago, and the bike lane part of the project started as the community of Oakview got a grant that started the multimodal study. The community formed an advisory group, which included officials from the supervisor's office, other agencies, including Caltrans, and they all contributed to the multimodal The meetings were held in this facility, I remember attending some of them, somewhere between March and June of 2018. Thereafter, the multimodal study report was completed, and with that, one of the conclusions was that there was an action plan that was to be followed, and that lined up perfectly with what Caltrans was planning on this highway. Because at that time, Caltrans was also planning a pavement improvement project, which starts from Casita Springs and go all the way to Ojai. So those two aspects lined up properly, and therefore, the elements that came from the multimodal study were integrated into the pavement project. Let me repeat that, that the pavement project itself starts from Casita Springs and go all the way to Ojai. However, the multimodal part or the bike lane part only covers the community of Oakview. So we also held a scoping meeting back in March of 2023, and from what we got from that input, we decided to follow up with a demonstration project, which was completed in winter of 2024. Think we all scared you. Next slide, please. So after looking at all the comments that the community provided, we developed three alternatives. So alternative one was the original alternative, which was to pave the project and also improve some of the curb ramps, traffic signals, crosswalks, as well as the metal beam guardrails within the segment. We also proposed in that alternative to add new sidewalks and pedestrian crossing infrastructure, including improvement and additional bus shelters and bus parts, and also more controlled pedestrian crossings. Then, from the community and the multimodal study, we added the second part in alternative two, which includes the reconfiguration of the five lanes that are currently in the community of Oakview into three lanes, one lane in each direction with a two-way left turn lane. Then, as most of the project usually have what is called a no-build alternative, which means leave it alone as it is, don't even do the pavement improvement. So usually, you would have that alternative as part of what we call project report or development of preliminary engineering. Next slide. So most of the improvement that we are proposing within the community of Oakview is centered around this section right here. So in this section, you'll see that there's a continental crosswalks that are being proposed, bike shelters and bike parts, ADA curb ramps are also being proposed, as well as new sidewalks and the bike lanes. And I think most of the people are interested in that segment of the bike lanes. Next slide. Some of the controlled crosswalks that we are proposing is this type of device that currently exists in Casita Springs. It's called a pedestrian hybrid beacon. So we are proposing to add more of this in order to facilitate pedestrians crossing the highway. In addition, we are also proposing high-visibility crosswalks, like I mentioned before, and new bus parts, ADA curb ramps, and new sidewalks. Next slide. So as a part of alternative two, we have come up with two options for the bike lanes. Should you choose to go that, or should the community of Oakview choose to go with the bike lane, we have come up with two options. Option one, this one we learned, from the lessons that we learned from the demonstration project, this is how we came up with option one. Basically, it's a separation of the bike lane and the sidewalk from the travel lane. Okay? I see some people shaking their heads. That's okay. So this is one of the proposals that we are coming with. Basically, there will be a separation, a landscaped, what you call a buffer, that separates the bike lane and the sidewalk. Say that again? Okay. Then there is option two, which is mostly is gonna look like what you have out there, is mostly a striping, including a buffer. However, there are some disadvantages and lessons learned, and I'll talk that a little bit about why we came up with option two. Next slide. So again, just to go over, just repeat it, that the option one include a separation from the travel lane, and the option two is what you have out there. Okay? So next slide. So one of the items that we learned when we put the demonstration project is the conflict, the conflict, because this section has a lot of driveways. So there's, we observed that the vehicles are using the bike lane in order to access some of these driveways. So in order to resolve that, we came up with the option two, I'm sorry, the option one, which separate the bike lane from the travel lane. Now, usually, the separated bike lanes are much safer, primarily because it's separated from the travel lane. Okay? Just give me a second. Let me finish, please. So, and more people who are not experienced bike riders are likely to use the facility that's separated. That's primarily why we came up, we developed the second option. So I want to talk a little bit about the demonstration project, why we did it. Usually, Caltrans never runs most of these projects as demonstration project, but we understand the community needed to see how the traffic impact and how the bike lane is gonna look like. So that's why we followed through with the demonstration project, and there are a few things we learned from it, and one of it is why we came up with an alternate option for the bike lane. And also, we wanted to hear, to understand how the businesses are impacted by this demonstration So here are the community concerns. So I know I got a lot of emails and comments, which I appreciated, so that I can get the input from community, from the community. And we categorized all the comments in about six categories. So in this section, I'll address the first two, and the other four are related to the traffic, and they'll be addressed by our traffic consultant. So one of the questions that was raised is, why exactly do we need this bike lane? We have a bike lane already that exists and runs far out to state highway. So the purpose of this bike lane, as you can see, it doesn't continue all the way. It's really to provide access to Oakview community itself. So for somebody who lives in Oakview, they'll be able to walk and also ride the bikes to the community. So that's the purpose of it, which doesn't, which is not covered by the bike train. So also, the next, the other item was, is this gonna change the community character? So from the comments that we've seen is that as the traffic comes up from the single lane, either north or southbound, they tend to speed through the community of Oakview. So those are, that was some of the input that we got from the community. And by providing this lane reduction, the traffic will be much calmer and follow a single profile. So those are, those are the two categories I wanted to address. The other categories involve increased traffic and the concern that the traffic was gonna bypass the single lane and go into the local community. That will be addressed as part of the traffic report. Also, there was a concern about the emergency access. So we met with the emergency responders of this area, and that is part of also of the traffic report. There was also issues related to the safety concerns of left-turning vehicles. That is also part of the traffic report, and I think the most concern was the commute time. How much does the reduction of this lane impact your commute? That was significant part of the study, and it will be addressed by traffic consultant. So with that, I'll invite Kent, he's from Person's Engineering, he's a consultant Caltrans hired to work on this traffic report, and thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Joseph. Good evening, everyone. Today, I'm gonna provide a brief review of the traffic study that was done along this corridor. We look at the existing traffic conditions, travel times for pre- and post-demonstration, as well as some intersection operations, as well as summary of traffic analysis, and some potential mitigations. Next slide. We looked at the 19 study intersections, and three of them are signalized, Lamra, Oakview, and San Antonio Boulevard. We looked at the peak hour, as well as the volume to capacity and queue analysis. Next slide. The 2024 intersection operations did show some delay for the local side streets with low volumes from the local side streets, and the northbound and southbound due traffic did not experience any significant delay. Next slide, please. As far as the corridor travel time, we measured from one and a half miles from Oak Creek Road to San Antonio Way. As you can see from the graph, all the travel times are under three minutes, with little difference between the two travel times, between the post-demonstration and pre-demonstration project. Next slide. We also looked at 2029 intersection operations, as again, delay, minimum delay from the side streets, as well as low volumes from the side streets, and the northbound and southbound traffic did not experience significant delays. Next slide. The corridor travel times for 2029, again, we looked at the same one and a half mile corridor segment. We also looked at reviewing and optimizing some of the signal timing, and particularly at Lamra Avenue to help the southbound movement. And again, from the results of the study, we looked at other travel times under three minutes. Next slide. The summary of the results, again, we looked at the side streets, the turn lane storage, as well as the travel time and emergency accessibility. As far as the local side streets, we do experience some increased delay at Conco Street and Oakgrade Road. The storage are some are exceeded. We'll talk about the potential mitigations. And as far as the travel time, the corridor at Lamra Avenue, we look at the southbound movement, looking at the optimization of the movement. And we are, as Joseph mentioned, we talked to the emergency responders from Ventura County Fire, as well as the emergency responders, and we got their feedback as far as how vehicles are gonna access through the corridor, and their particular issue was the raised curb, which is one of the options that vehicles may be put through. Next slide. So this is a summary of potential mitigation from this traffic study. One of them is restricting the left turns during the peak hours, either it's left or right turns, and also a option to reconsider intersection removal of the signal at Lamra And that, that would be, you know... Yeah. Thank you. As far as the left, left turns, the storage lanes, we did look into increasing the storage. Again, some of them are beyond capacity, so we looked at extending some of the storage lanes for either the left or right turn. The corridor travel time, we looked at the optimizing the signals, again, the three signals, particularly the Lamra Avenue for the southbound movement. Again, we, you know, as far as the ongoing process, there is also different time of day, and we can provide optimization for these signals to help improve the travel time on the corridor. And again, last but not least, the emergency vehicle access issue. The vehicles can utilize the existing two-way left turn lane to go through and provide and get access through that corridor. With that said, I'm gonna pass it over to Environmental.
Good to be back here. Thank you. Good to be back here from 2023, and I see some familiar faces that you're back and your beautiful community. My name is Mojgon. I'm from the Department of Environmental Planning, Caltrans, and I'm gonna go over some of the environmental laws that you see up on the board. As part of the project delivery process in Caltrans, Caltrans is required to comply with all the local, state, and federal environmental laws. In that order, then, the state environmental laws in California, you all probably heard, are CEQA, California Environmental Quality Act, and then the federal environmental law is the National Environmental Policy Act, NEPA. Both for CEQA and NEPA require both these, that agencies to inform the public about potential environmental effects, that effects that we can do to minimize the effects that is going to happen to the project. Caltrans has prepared for this project a draft environmental document that is titled Initial Study and Environmental Assessment. The initial study is the CEQA part, the state requirement, and then the environmental assessment is the NEPA part, the federal requirement. The information in the I S E A, or Initial Study Environmental Assessment, contains a comprehensive summary of how the project might affect the environment, including both positive and negative. Next slide, please. The environmental studies that are included in this draft environmental that are up here are Community Impact Assessment, Traffic Operational Analysis Report, which Kent went briefly over it, that I'm sure you guys have questions that we can address later on, and Visual Impact Assessment, Historical Properties and Archaeological Resources, Hazardous Waste, Air Quality, and Biological Environment. And these all can be made available to all of you upon request if you'd like to take a look at them. Next slide, please. The next slide is the phases of the project that we are in, and as you can see, we are right here, we're circulating the draft environmental document, and it involves 46 days of review period with the comments submittal date of June 27th of this year. So please make sure to submit your comments online or here tonight, and you have time for the rest of the community till June 27th. At this stage of project, we respond, we receive the comments, and then we respond to the comments, and the next stage will be, we will select the preferred alternatives from all the comments that the community had provided us, and those all will be included in the final environmental document, which approximately that's gonna be in fall of 2025. From there on, the next stage of the project is gonna be the design project, which is in 2026, and then hopefully, construction for ease of your community in 2027. And then, the next slide, please. The next step on the project is that we finish to complete, we finish and complete the hearing process tonight, and after the public circulation, which is June 27th, again, process has process tonight, and after the public circulation, which is June 27th, again, process has concluded, then Caltrans will respond to all your comments and that we received in the final environmental documents. I'm pretty much repeating and concluding here. And at the final decision that is selected, which alternatives is going to be based on all your inputs and what community likes to have, then we're going to proceed to design an environmental phase. And at this point, the environmental section is concluded. It was a short presentation, but the document is pretty concise and it's, we have the webpage up and running, so you guys can visit that as well. I really recommend that. And next, I'm going to give it to Edna, please, to go over and finish off the process.
All right. So a lot of good information. Thank you to the project team for all that information. I just want to remind everyone that this is a public hearing, so I know that there was some questions floating around. We are going to open it up to the formal comment period now. You guys did receive a speaker card during registration. If you do wish to make a verbal comment, whether it's a comment or a question, I do encourage that you fill this out. We are going to be starting the formal comment period in the next couple of minutes. So I want to make sure that we do capture everyone. So please, if you want to make your question or comment, please fill this card out. If you don't have one, please raise your hand and one of our team members will be able to help you, and we'll provide a pen for you as well. You also did receive a comment card, which is a little bit bigger, letter size like this. If you're a little shy, don't want to come up here, but you do want to make your comment available to us, please fill out the card. You can either turn it in tonight, or you can also mail it. All right, so, so as the team stated, the document is available online. We do have some fact sheets available during registration at the registration table that has the link and to as to whether you can view the document online. We also do have a copy at Oakview Library, so if you need to go to the library and make some copies, you can do that there. So as I stated, we'll move on to the formal comment process. The comments, your comments will be, you'll be able to submit your comments until Friday, June 27th, 2025. So again, we do have a court reporter. I'll be your facilitator for tonight. So again, this is a formal public hearing. My role tonight is to make sure that everyone who is interested in providing an oral comment has an opportunity to do so tonight. We are conducting this public hearing to receive your comments on the environmental elements presented in the document. And as I mentioned to you earlier tonight, we are here to listen to all comments. Even if you did provide a comment tonight, you can also submit your comments in writing via email or mail as well. Can you go to the next slide, please? So I want to remind everyone again that we do have a dual setup for tonight's public hearing. We have about 17 people online via Zoom. Here, we have a full house at about 55 people tonight. So again, I mentioned the speaker card, so feel free to, feel free to turn it in. For the online audience, again, I want to remind you that you can use your raised hand on Zoom. You are automatically put in order. Our online team is monitoring the hands that are raised and we'll be calling on those raised hands. In order to give everyone a chance to make their question and or comment, every speaker will have 90 seconds to state their question and or comment. I will be putting a timer for those that want to make a verbal comment here tonight. I will be taking five speakers in the online, in the in-person audience, and then I'll turn it over to five speakers online. This is so that everyone has a chance to state their question and or comment. We do have the court reporter, like I said, here to my left. We only have one, so please make sure that you are speaking your first name, your last name clearly, your zip code, and then the community that you are representing tonight. So the court reporter, if at any point doesn't understand you or can't hear you, we will go ahead and interrupt you and make sure that we capture your name correctly. So if you have additional questions or comments, please feel free to speak to one of our team members, general comments or questions. Other than that, please feel free to either make your comment here with the mic or with the court reporter. So with that, we will begin our formal comment process. So I did collect a couple of speaker cards, so I want to make sure that everyone that did turn it in is going to be speaking. So the first one, like I said, we'll take five in person and then five online. So as you hear your name, please come up. I would probably ask you to line up here, five at a time. So I'm going to call on Barbara Kennedy, Tina Brahman, Jeff Winston, Stephen Weed, let me see, that's four, and Greg Webster. I hope I understood that correctly. Thank you. So Barbara, you want to come up? And again, we are calling you up here because we do have an online audience, so I want to make sure that the online audience can also hear you. So I'll hold on to the mic and then, yeah, so you have 90 seconds. Can you start the 90 second, Jesse, please? Hold on. And then again, make sure that you state your first name, last name, zip code, and community so that the court reporter can hear it. Are you good?
Barbara Kennedy, Oakview 93022. What else? Oh, my comment is that I am in favor of turn signals at each of the intersections. I think that would save a lot of the problems that we have in Oakview. There's not enough time for cars to get through, and we watch people riding red lights all day long. It would also allow for the businesses to have time to make those left-hand turns, to get out of their, out of their businesses for their, for their patrons. That's a big problem we have in Oakview right now. The cars never stop going, and so until we can get those cars to stop, there's no way for these people to work with the business owners and be patrons for them. I think in lack of police enforcement is a huge issue in Oakview. I think that that has a lot to do with the accidents that we're having right now, people driving in the bike lane when they shouldn't be. The other big question I'm going to have, you probably can't answer today, is e-bikes. Are they supposed to be in that bike lane or not? I think there's a lot of confusion. I think the lack of education on this whole project has really left for, for some of the issues that we're having in our community. I think that that's the number one thing. For instance, the stoplight in Casita Springs, you're talking about putting more of those in Oakview for crosswalks in Oakview. Nobody knows how to use the thing. People don't remember that a flashing red light means stop. The point of the flashing red light is to slow traffic. It's not just to get people to cross the street. The flashing red light is supposed to continue on, so people stop like it's a four-way stop and slow the, slow and calm the traffic going through the community. I think education is what we're really, really lacking in this project from the very beginning.
Thank you, Barbara. All right, Tina, and I'm actually going to have you go on this side so that you can be closer to the court reporter.
First name, last name, zip code, and community.
Tina Brumand, Creek Road, Ojai, California. Back when this project started, it was estimated that the narrowing of lanes could handle 21,000 average daily trips. Nowhere in this report today did I understand or hear how many average daily trips do we have going through the corridor? It's my understanding that we have already exceeded that amount and that we don't have any room for growth. We have Autozone that's about to make a change to our entire Oakview area plan as it relates to businesses where businesses aren't required to do a traffic study. We don't know what that's going to do, and if we're already at our maximum of throughput, we have a proposed change that's going to even grow more traffic. Creek Road is not included in any of these studies, yet it provides a 100% bypass to all of the congestion that's going on in Oakview. So while this may have calmed things, while your numbers may look better, all that traffic was diverted down Creek Road, which is a wildlife corridor. So we have traffic accidents that are not being reported. We have damage to property. We have the inability for pedestrians to walk in what was a rural road, and that is not being captured, and we've asked for that upfront. So this is really a big, big problem. I absolutely agree that maybe timing lights. I noticed in Ventura, Santa Barbara, going down Bath Street, 20, 25 miles an hour, you get green, green signs. We don't have any of that in this proposal here. I recommend you get with some of us that are really invested. I've been at every single meeting. I can tell you all these things happily to give you the detail that I think you need. Like Barbara's saying, more of that in Casita Springs, it's going to cause more congestion. So thank you.
Thank you, Tina. All right, Jeff. Jeff? No, Jeff? Jeff Winston? Okay, so let me go on to the next one, and then Jesse, let me know if we have raised hands online. Okay, so we'll complete the five, like I mentioned, and then we'll go to the one online. So Stephen. On this side, Stephen.
You're going to hold it for me? Oh, how sweet. It's tough to be vertically challenged. Stephen Weed, 93022, Oakview. So to start with, what we're seeing out there now is roughly equivalent to proposal two with the bike lanes that are not restricted by a barrier from, can you hear me? Is that, okay, yeah, like I said, well, so. It's, it's, yeah, it's a challenge. Is this okay? Yeah. Okay, so let's start again. So Stephen Weed, Oakview 93022. My perspective of what's happening out there now seems like it's roughly equivalent to proposal two without the barriers between the bike lane and traffic. I think a lot of things are working there. Traffic is slowing down. People are being courteous. There are obviously shortfalls to it. I want to speak to just a couple of things. Following up on what Tina said, I do think that we need to have statistics about traffic counts before and after, and personally, I'm not really sure how you project into 2029 to find out what commute times are. Secondly, I really like the proposal where the bike lanes are not restricted. It reduces visibility to have those bumpers there, especially if you have, you know, bushes there, and if you're riding a bike, which not many people are, but some are, then it makes it, it gives bicyclists the assumption that they're going to be protected. If you're going to pull in there, the visibility is really bad. So I think having those partitions is really bad idea. Secondly, the most important thing I want to speak to is one particular intersection, that's Highway 33 and the Ameria Drive. Coming up the hill, you have a lot of people that cannot see the street sign that say, hey, traffic change, head narrowing to one lane, and you have a curve there. I think what you need is some sort of a bump out just past the bank, so if somebody's going to like la, 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 and go down that bike lane, they're going to learn really quickly. That's really important for safety, and that's one of the primary issues of this whole project.
Thank you, Steve. Do you want to keep that, or do you want to submit that? Do you want to submit that as part of the?
I have to revise it because there's new information.
Okay.
I'll send it as a comment.
Sure. Greg.
Forty years I've lived here. I run Greg Rant's Equipment Rental. I've been a commercial driver since 2005. It's extremely challenging pulling out onto the highway. Anything we can do to get traffic to slow down is safer. I'm tired of seeing people die out here. I'm afraid for my life every day, working in the streets of Oakview and the Ojai Valley and Ventura County. I do think education is key on the bike lanes, for sure, like Barbara said. I think the green lights would be great, tax dollars for sidewalks. You know, I had to spend $100,000 of my own money to put a sidewalk in in front of 420 North Ventura Avenue right here. That's a whole nother story. That was a big deal. The landscaping that's here, I've kind of gone rogue and put in a lot of trees, as you see through the whole corridor on Sunday morning. It's not maintained. I'm having to maintain it myself on Sunday. Look at the sidewalks that are here. I think we need more sidewalks. I'm in support of that. I'm for option one. I'm curious to see if the bike lanes, the striping is toxic when they're laying that stuff down. You didn't want to breathe it. You don't want your kids around it. I'm curious how much we paid the consultant. I'm curious to see how many trips are coming from, to and back from Ventura. You yourself make the trip. How many people are making that trip commuting? Pro landscaping, what size of the, yeah, thank you, guys. I appreciate you. Any, any tax dollars coming our way for the town of Oakview is much appreciated. I'm all for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. All right, and, thank you. And we are going to turn it over to the online audience. How many raised hands do we have? Two. Okay, so we're going to turn it over, so you guys should be able to hear the online audience. So Jesse, who's the first one? Lauren Galvin. Please feel free to go ahead and start speaking. For the in-person audience, please bear with us as we're toggling back and forth. Lauren, we'll come back to you. I'm not sure if you're having some audio issues, but we'll go ahead and go to Jeff next. No last name. Jeff, please feel free to unmute yourself. Go ahead and state your first name, last name, your zip code, and your community, please.
Hello, my name is Jeff Galvin. I'm a resident in Oakview, zip code 93022. Are you able to hear me? Okay, I am.
I can hear you.
I am joining you today as a strong supporter of version Build Alternative 2 with the barricaded bike lanes. I, I'm a father. I have several young children. I've seen a counterargument out there saying there are no bikes going through Oakview. I can tell the audience and the presenters there that I would love to use the road with my bike and my children. However, the current layout makes it very dangerous, and I would not be willing to put the family at risk as is. I believe that a lot of people are worried about the increased traffic collisions due to the bike lanes, and I do agree that how it is now, there are additional traffic collisions because people are speeding through town. But if those dedicated barriers were able to block traffic from doing that, then it would be more of a single file line through town for all of the vehicles. I do think that additional thought needs to be given on how to connect the proposed A2 build with the buffered bike lanes to the Ojai Bike Trail. Instead of it being truly a sidewalks and bike path on either side of the 33, I think more of a multi-use biking and walking path on one side of the 33, and then on the other side, it could be a sidewalk and a less dedicated bike path, and that would allow more people to travel towards the bike path or towards the school system or all the businesses on the left-hand side. And with the addition of the left-hand side. And with the addition of more crosswalks, people would be able to get...
Sorry, let me interrupt you. Your 90 seconds are up. If you want to continue to state your comment, raise your hand again and we'll come back to you. I just want to make sure that the in-person audience also, we keep this flowing because we are here until 7:30. So I want to be respectful of everyone's turn. Thank you, Jeff. So Lauren, we're gonna go back to you. Hopefully you have fixed your audio issues. We'll turn it to you. Please state your first name, last name, zip code, and the community that you're representing tonight. Lauren, I think you're continuing to have audio issues. Michaela, online, if you can just message Lauren so that she can submit her comment via email, or she can try maybe calling in through Zoom. So we're gonna keep it going. Again, we're gonna come back to the in-person audience. So I'm gonna call on the next five, which is, again, I'm sorry if I'm not reading this accurately. Dr. Terry Collins, Vicki Quinlan, Joseph Perry, Cecina, and Gia. Dr. Terry, come on. Again, first name, last name, zip code, and the community you're representing.
Dr. Terry Collins, Casita Springs, 93001. I'm coming from the perspective of having lived here 74 years. I've been driving these roads 59 years. I go to Ojai at least a dozen times a week. Besides that, I'm a retired educator. One of my credentials is in public safety, including driver education, driver training. I got a little perspective there. Since the bike lanes demonstration project was put in, the total bikes I have seen on those areas is one. I walk the Ojai Trail every day, and I see many, many bikes there where it's very safe for them to use that. My proposal, after talking to Joseph before the meeting, he presented option one and option two. What he didn't present was what he told me is option three, which is to put it back the way it was before the demonstration bike lanes. Two lanes in each direction, at the same time repaved, do all the safety measures, fix the sidewalks, do all the stuff that we need to beautify, allow people in and out to the businesses, but at the same time eliminate the hazards with the bike lanes there. One block from here, the Ojai Trail's right there, block away. And that's where most of the bikes are used, and that's where it's safe. I would urge all of you to write your comments and go back to option three, the way it was 20 years ago. It'll increase traffic flow through here, make it a lot faster, easier, and less people trying to crunch people out of the way. Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Okay, Vicki.
Hi, Vicki Quinlan, Oakview 93022. I appreciate what was just said because although I've only been in this valley for 15 years, I've only been in this valley for 15 years and just the last four years in Oakview. But what I can say is the bike trail that goes from Ventura all the way through to Bryant Lane, I mean, it's beautiful. It's whether you walk it, you drive it, you, I mean, drive on a bike. Yeah, don't use your cars. Anyway, and/or horses. And I've seen, and it's such a beautiful trail. To take out actual driving lanes, I mean, I get that if there's less cars on the road, there's less pollution. I get that. But I haven't seen that. It's actually, there's more car, there's the same amount of cars, it just takes longer to get through town. And like someone else was talking about Creek Road. And yes, that's what I do. I go Creek Road because it's such a mess. Anyway, I really appreciate the opportunity to be able to voice an opinion, and I agree with the previous person. We need to put it back the way it was, and people need to use the bike lane for the bike lane and for the horses and for the walking. Thank you.
Thank you, Vicki. All right, Joseph.
Perry.
I'm not 100% sure if this is pertinent, but I live in Casita Springs. Joe Perry, Joseph Perry, 93001, Casita Springs. And according to this map, it looks like it involves the bridge over San Antonio Creek. I called or texted Salud Carballos Office in regards to when that was going to be completed. Two weeks later, they sent me an email saying to contact Steve Bennett's office. Contacted Steve Bennett's office. Two weeks later, gentleman did contact me back. He was concerned about driving over that bridge, especially when semi-trucks. Anyone who's been on that bridge when a semi-truck's coming at you is a scary situation. They said they'd get back in touch with me. I wanted to know if that was subcontracted out or Caltrans and when it was going to be completed. That bridge has been like that for a while now. We all know that. You're not going to believe this. The message I got back was they would not be able to work on that bridge if there's water in the creek. Now, there's a bridge at Santa Barbara Coal Springs. It's up in the sky, and there's water under there, and they were... anyway, that's irrelevant. But the other thing you're not going to believe, and I wish all of you would call Steve Bennett's office. They said that project is not going to restart until 2027. So be careful going over that bridge. Thank you.
Thank you, Joseph. Cecina?
Yeah. Sorry, I just wanted to, because I'm Atikas Reyes. I work for Assemblyman Steve Bennett. I also cover transportation for Assemblyman Steve Bennett. I'm gonna be here till the end. You can get my information, because that is absolutely a concern that we've heard over and over and over. I can tell you exactly what Caltrans has told me in that, what the environmental permits that they got to do the original project, they were not able to do that with water in the creek. Caltrans is now getting new permits that will allow them to do that for moving forward. So you won't have that issue, but it's taking some time because there's easements involved that they gotta work with private property owners. So happy to send that update to anybody. If you want my information, like I said, I'll be here till the end. You can call Steve Bennett's office. You're gonna talk to me. If you forget my name, I'm the only guy that works in the office. Just say there was a guy that works for Steve Bennett, and they'll send you straight to me. If you say you're from Ojai, they're gonna send you straight to me, or Oakview, they're gonna send you straight to me, okay? So happy to help anyone with that issue after this. Thank you.
Thank you, Atikas. Cecina, please, come up.
Hello, my name is Cecina Sabolet, and I live in Oakview 93022. I don't have anything prepared, and I called my neighbor Gia, as we live right on Sunset in Laramie, and we thought, you know, let's walk over to this meeting. I feel like my voice and who I'm representing needs to be heard. So here it goes. I'm a mother of two children. I've lived in Oakview for 15 years, and to be, I've come here to Nantolbert Center on a stroller when Greg Rents didn't have the sidewalks. So thank you for putting all that money for us mothers trying to get down here to Nantolbert for mommy and me classes and being able to walk without fearing your life, for your life and your children. I also just want to address the whole thing about sidewalks and the bike lane. We don't have access to the beautiful bike lane here in the upper Oakview near Ranch, sorry, I'm a little nervous, by the market. There's no way for us in this neighborhood to get to that. And for all these years, I've had to go down, you know, the 33 in order for me to get to this side or to get to the bike path. It's scary. I have children, my children now are 13 and 11, and I will never let them go until I see some kind of safer bike lane where it is divided, where they feel like, I think there's many, the community is changing. There's a lot of new families, and I want that to be considered too because things change, right? And kids, our teenagers are wanting to get to school to Nordoff, and I won't let them go on a bike because I don't feel like I can get to the bike path. So, thank you.
Thank you, Cecina. Do you want to take your hand out? All right, Gia.
Hi, I'm Gia Iloli, I-L-O-L-E, and I live in Oakview 93022. I did walk here with Cecina, and I also have school-aged children. And I will say that I've really enjoyed this past year where we have been able to access that bike lane, and my son has been able to get over to the bike path to get to school. I'm a widow, and sometimes I can't always pick him up, and it's been very, very helpful for me in the last year that my son can actually ride to school. So that's been important. It's also been really valuable that we can walk to Noe's Cafe for the first time. I wouldn't have walked there before. I wouldn't have, that we can go to the Thai place. And I really want to echo Greg's comments on having the trees and having some landscaping. It's really gonna add a lot to our downtown. Having a walkable neighborhood is really valuable. It's great for homeowners and the prices and all the things that we want. It's really great for the community. And I really look forward to my kids and my grandchildren growing up in an area where we can, you know, come to these businesses and make this part of our home.
Thank you, Gia. All right, so I want to turn it over to the online audience. See if there is any hands raised. Jesse? Lauren, Lauren, you're coming back. Hopefully your audio issue has been fixed. So Lauren, please, I'll go ahead and unmute you. You should be able to speak.
Can you hear me? Hello? Oh, yay, okay. All right, well, I'm Lauren Galvin. I live on Kunkel in Oakview, area code 93022. So we're right in the heart of the project area. And I really do relate to the last two ladies who spoke because we live on a street that dead-ends into the 33. Dead-end is not the right term, but our only way to anywhere is making a right or a left on the 33. And I have three young children, and I am so eager to make it to that bike path and get there to enjoy that beautiful path as well and go to school without our car because it's so close, but it's just not attainable because it's not safe or the path or anywhere else. So we can't take advantage of those things right now because, as it is now, as we've said, cars are using the bike path to pass on the right. I've observed it. And so I'm not willing to put them at risk. However, I do truly appreciate the efforts that have been made so far. So I'm fully in support of A2 with the Class 4 bike lanes for that purpose. So it gives us that barrier. And not only is it cosmetic, but I've read that according to the Transportation Research Board that it reduces bicycle crashes by up to 90%. I heard that emergency access is a main concern, and my husband's in emergency response. He actually drives emergency response vehicles. And he's very well aware of what it would take. And he's been through many communities where it's a two-lane road, and it's a non-issue because the designs are engineered with emergency vehicles in mind. Another important concern I heard was emergency evacuations, especially during fire season. I live here, too. I take that very seriously. And while the 33 carries an average daily traffic volume of somewhere around 25,000 vehicles, according to the U.S. Department of Transportation, the road diet on the street with volumes below that threshold do not impede evacuation and can even reduce the confusion.
Lauren, can I interrupt you real quickly? I'm sorry, but your 90 seconds were up. We do have a couple more in-person speaker cards. So if you want to continue to make your comment, if you could just raise your hand again so that we could go back. We're toggling back and forth between in-person and online. Thank you. So again, want to make sure that everyone knows we're here until 7:30. I have three more speaker cards. So if you want to continue and make your comment, please go ahead and turn this in, any of our staff. So with that, I do have four more speaker cards to go through. So I think it's Dee Harper, Terry, Terry Tatro, Chris Aniker, and John Cinal. All right, come up.
Hello. Good evening. Dee Harper, 93022. Valley View Drive since 1977. So I've been here a while. I'm going to be very simplistic in my plea to this community, and that is, do you remember the Thomas Fire? My primary concern is the Thomas Fire and evacuation of this valley for its residents. I want a return to a four-lane capacity. I'm also concerned that the state of California is a billion dollars in debt, that very few people are using the bike lanes currently. I have empathy for the businesses. I support Greg Rents. Greg, if you are here, you can go back and see my name on lots of receipts. And I think a lot of us have empathy for businesses, but the current situation in Oakview is not helpful for your business. So that's my plea. Please remember these things. They are important to this community. And I plan to live here till I'm 100. So, you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Dee. All right, Terry. Okay. Chris?
Chris Aniker, live in Oakview 93022. I have an idea to accept Alternative Three. Somebody mentioned it, go back to the two lanes. But if Caltrans can do it, and I think they can from the research I've done, is narrow the lanes to 11 feet instead of 12 feet. And then you have more space for the safety and wider sidewalks. So you kind of accommodate and compromise for both. You've got wider lanes, narrow lanes, but you've got two lanes going back to what people want for some reason. Good luck with negotiating back past, getting south past Laramie. Well, that's the gist of it, is narrow lanes if they can do it. And I understand 11 feet can work. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Court reporter, you caught all that? We lost him for a second. Okay. All right, John?
Yes, hi, my name is John Sinal. I live in beautiful flatlands of Fort Winnie. I'm here because a couple of friends of mine that live just a few blocks from here cannot be here. And also, I'm retired Caltrans bike coordinator from District Six, which is up in Fresno. Two things. My friends, when we get together for lunch or whatever, they always complain about trash trucks during rush hour on 33. If that's a concern from any of you, please put that on the card, okay? The other thing is, just a few minutes ago, the trail was announced. The trail is a separate facility from 33. Long-distance riders use it. If you want to bike and use the retail areas along 33, the bike trail is not where you're going to use. You're going to need something along 33. So there's different plans here. You guys can make some decisions. But think about the trash trucks maybe contacting Caltrans or Steve's office and adjust the trash truck hours so they're not stopping along the highway during rush hour. Just a matter of adjusting times. And also, the trail is not what we're trying to work on here, which is the retail area on 33 here, which is whatever. So anyway, thank you very much, and thank you for being here.
Perfect, thank you. Do we have any online? No, okay. So we are here until 7:30. Again, I want to make sure that you all have the opportunity to state your verbal comment or question. If you have any to turn in, want to come up, please turn them in. I also want to call on Jeff again. Not sure if he left. Jeff Winston? He probably left. Jeff Winston, he probably left. Heidi. And just make sure that you indicate what community and zip code.
Sure, I'm Heidi Thompson, 93022. I live here in Oakview. I live near Sunset Elementary School. To me, this is primarily an issue of safety. I walk over to the post office and the bank a couple of times a week. While crossing 33, coming back from the post office, I witnessed a really terrible accident that left one of my neighbors so seriously injured that he basically lost his livelihood. People have died crossing 33 in the last five years. The bike lane's not being used right now because it's too dangerous. And as other people have said, there are several hundred families over near Sunset Elementary School that are cut off from the bike path and cannot get to other businesses because it's too dangerous to walk on 33. So I'm a big supporter of Alternative 2. And I hope while we're remembering things, we can remember some of the families who have lost family members or have lost their livelihood because 33 is so dangerous.
Thank you, Heidi. All right, anyone else want to make a comment, question? If not, we are at 7:10. The website. Jesse, you want to bring up the website? Can you click on it? Since we have some time, maybe we can just go through the website very, very quickly. Just to show you how you guys can access the draft document. Are you able to click on it? Are you sharing it? I don't see it on the screen. All right, so while he pulls that up, again, you can access the website, the document, online. It is a pretty lengthy URL, I understand that. You guys, when you received your comment card, there is a QR code there. You can scan it. It takes you directly to the website. But as a reminder, you can access the document online. There is physical copies at Oakview Library. As I've said several times, tonight is your opportunity to provide live verbal comments. You can also email your comments to goookview@dot.ca.gov. Or you can also go ahead and mail them to Susan, Caltrans District 7, Division of Environmental Planning, 100 South Main Street, Suite 100, Los Angeles, California, 90012. And the public comment will end on June 27. Okay, there is also a QR code on the poster outside if you guys want to go ahead and do that. But for those that are online, our in-person audience is breaking a little bit. You guys can still visit some of the station boards if you guys have any questions. But for the online audience, we will remain until 7:30 and continue to monitor any hands that are raised. Jeff, you want to come back? Go ahead and state your full name, zip code, and community again, and we'll go ahead and capture that. Just want to remind everyone online that the presentation and the whole meeting is being recorded as well. So although it may be a little bit harder here, here in person, we can still capture your comments. So go ahead, Jeff.
Hi, Jeffrey Galvin, Oakview, 93022. Earlier, I mostly spoke to the bike path aspect of the version A, Alternative 2, with the buffered bike lane. But another aspect of keeping it a single lane in either direction is that when the vehicles reach either end of Oakview, in the old version of the roadway, vehicles would accelerate to get through Oakview. They would reach that new lane that opens up, and they would accelerate. With this new model, keeping it single lane through town, we don't have that issue of vehicles trying to pass and turning Oakview essentially into a drive-through town. So I think it really adds to the community character to keep vehicles slower and overall safety enhanced. That's all. Thanks, and I appreciate the ability to speak. Thank you, Jeffrey.
Jeff? All right, so just a couple of reminders for the online audience. The presentation was being recorded. We will go ahead and be posting the formal presentation online. So again, Jesse, if you can go back to the link for those that are still online, you can go ahead and visit that website. In the next couple of days, we'll be working to update the recording and the presentation as well. As a reminder, you can submit your comments until June 27, 2025. There is multiple ways, aside from tonight. You can go ahead and email them or mail them. And you should be able to, can you go back to the slide? You should be able to see that slide. So we'll hang here for a couple more minutes, 15 minutes. We are here until 7:30. Thank you.